The time has come for the Monday, August 3rd, 2020, Virtual Regular Waukegan City Council Meeting. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Bolton. Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Mosio.
Here.
Mayor Cunningham.
Present. Invocation will be given by Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Mayor. For tonight's invocation, I'd like to share the prayer of St. Francis. Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me sow love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. Where there is sadness, joy. Oh divine master, grant the name I may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive, it is in pardoning that we are pardoned, and it is in dying that we are born to eternal life.
Amen. Thank you, Alderman Florian. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's comments. As always, good evening, everyone. I bring you some sad news. For, I'm gonna say for our family in Waukegan. As many of you all know, Ms. Rochelle Evans, who was a normal guest at our council meeting, was found unresponsive at her home this Saturday. So I'm sending out not only my prayers and thoughts from me, who I've known and shared my entire life, spike a sister to myself, best friend to my sister, to Blair and Rochelle, her daughter, as they mourn and grieve the loss of their mom. For those who did not know Jeff McBride's mother passed this past weekend, the service was there. We want to send our condolences out to the McBride family. And we ask that we keep Pastor Arthur Gass and Pastor Walston Francis in our prayers at this time. COVID-19. Based on feedback from the Lake County Health Department in the following guidelines of the Illinois Department of Public Health in the CDC, we close the beach to non-residents on the weekend to prevent crowding and encourage social distancing. As a reminder to everybody out there listening, open does not mean over. While Waukegan, Illinois has been doing a good job of social distancing, wearing face covers, doing the things necessary. Unfortunately, some of our young men and young ladies, and I know it is tough for them, Alderman, I know it is tough for these young people. They're experiencing something that nobody on this council has ever experienced before in life, to give up your adolescent years by staying home and not being with your friends. Fortunately, this is the time that we have to do this. We've been doing a pretty good job of that, but we gotta get better. Because if we don't, this can result of us moving back to phase three, and I'm here to tell you, that's gonna be beyond difficult for all of us. Parents, you must watch these young men and young ladies in almost demand that they not congregate. That means at basketball courts, private parties, at the beach, we simply got to continue to do better. We cannot forget some of the strides that we've made to get to this point, but we simply cannot give this up. Open does not mean over, and that's period. Thank you for those who are adhering to all of the social distancing rules and face covers, and it must be well over ninety percent. But it only takes one to spread this virus the way it is. We must continue to wear our face covers, wash our hands, social distancing, continue to be safe and follow the recommended recommendations for traveling outside the state of Illinois. We know the hot spots. We just gotta do it, man. It's tough, but we have to do it. Comprehensive Plan. For those who are unable to watch the Comprehensive Land Use Plans Public Presentation on Monday, July 27th, the video is now available online at Waukegan's YouTube channel. Take a look and share your feedback with us at planning@waukeganil.gov. Road construction, everyone, please slow down on our roads, especially by these construction zones. The mayor, along with the council, are investing historic amounts into rebuilding the city's infrastructure, and we will agree we need to do more. That goes without saying. Five hundred and fifty million dollars is what the assessment told us. But we can't do it if our workers aren't safe. Please slow down in these areas. Alderman, just to let you know, we're probably gonna be having our neighborhood policing or part of the traffic division sit at some of these construction sites. They're in neighborhoods, they're gonna be ticketing. It's gonna happen. You're gonna get some phone calls that it wasn't them, or it, why ticket me and others assuming, I'm sorry. We cannot afford for anyone to get hurt doing these, one, construction zones, but more importantly, you shouldn't be speeding anywhere in the neighborhoods. Face coverings. Well, thank you to both sponsors and coordinators for their support in donations of facial masks and hand sanitizers to the Waukegan community. Whether you believe it or not, liken it or not, Matt Line distributed face covers, I think hand sanitizers, I heard that Alderman Taylor was there, thank you, ma'am. I don't know who else was there, but I did hear your name, thank you for being there. Dr. Willie Wilson, Ms. Julie Contreras kind of put that together at the laundromat near People's Choice. Thousands of face covers to Waukegan residents, well, probably to Lake County, but Waukegan residents certainly was the recipients of those because it happened in our town. Thank you. In the minority-majority community where the essential workers are here in Waukegan, Illinois, at three times the rate of any city throughout the county, we need almost, and I'm here to tell you, our residents took advantage of them. Waukegan Fire Department is hiring. Applications may be downloaded from Waukegan from waukeganil.gov. Once completed, the application must be returned or turned in by August 28th to Fire Station 1, and that's at 1101 Belvedere Road. And again, you can download the application, which you must return it in person that I know of at this point. And Alderman, please be aware that we just need to, as we need to hire new firefighters to replace our retired firefighters, we also need to be replacing retiring or retiring some old ambulances. These are things as part of the past, their useful lives, it's like twenty years, we need to start planning for some replacements of these vehicles. I think we have about roughly four ambulances at that twenty-year age mark. I know we did a major dedication to a ladder truck just recently, but our planning and talking with the chief and looking at the, you know, those vehicles that need replacing, and as we all know right now, the vast majority of our calls in the city of Waukegan is what? Emergency. Medical emergencies. We must get these fire ambulance, these ambulance, ambulances upgraded over the next one to two years. I'll be bringing you some information about that, but that is the next step for our fire department. Retirement. Congratulations to Mark Fragacy of the Water Department, who's retiring, I believe to be with seventeen years of service as a city of Waukegan employee. I want to wish him nothing but the best of luck and Godspeed as he move into a different phase of his life. Genesee Theater. Genesee Theater is giving historical tours and ghost walks the next two Thursdays and next Saturday. Reservations are required. It may be made at geneseetheater.com. Lake County Restaurants. Visit Lake County Restaurants Rally runs through Sunday, August 9th. Show your support for local restaurants by saving some of the Lake County's best dining and help boost business. A number of Waukegan restaurants are involved. See visitlakecounty.org/restaurants/rally for more information. Bottom line, let's go out and eat. I think our restaurants have done a fantastic job of positioning their tables, their chairs, their counters for the social distance, and some of them have it where if your husband and wife or girlfriend, boyfriend, brother, sister, you can sit together, but yet six feet apart. Because I'm not the best cook in the world, I am certainly one of those who frequent our restaurants throughout Waukegan. Census. I don't need to beat this drum no more than all of you have. Listen, everybody, this is the time for us to make sure that the city of Waukegan gets counted correctly. This is the broken record for some new to others. Our census tract says we're at eighty-nine thousand and some change. Police, fire, public works, every Alderman up here, we service well over one hundred and twenty-five thousand people in this community. At least about roughly thirty percent undercounted. We can't afford those resources to go to other communities, but better yet, stay in DC, a state in the state of Illinois. They must come here. We can do wonders for you and your homes, but you gotta help us. For those who've already taken a test, thank you. For those who need to take the test, I'm encouraging right now. All of our Aldermen have taken pictures showing that this is important to all of us. So please, take three to five minutes, take this, the census, so we can be counted correctly. And that's it for me. Thank you once again. With that being said, item number two, Resolution Proclamation Presentation Appointment. Motion by Alderman Kirkwood, second by Alderman Taylor, proclamation Ray Bradbury Day in Waukegan, August 27th, 2020, and beyond. Madam Clerk, you want to read it? The proclamation, please.
Ray Bradbury Day in Waukegan, August 22nd, 2020, and beyond. Whereas Ray Douglas Bradbury was born on August 22nd, 1920, in Waukegan, Illinois, and whereas Ray Bradbury is one of the most celebrated authors among twentieth and twenty-first century American writers, and is internationally recognized for his countless works of literature in the genre of fantasy, horror, science fiction, and mystery. And whereas Ray Bradbury is best known for his novels Fahrenheit 451, The Martian Chronicles, The Illustrated Man, Something Weird This Way Comes, and Dandelion Wine. And whereas Ray Bradbury was the recipient of the National Medal of Arts, and whereas Ray Bradbury has received an Emmy Award, and whereas Ray Bradbury has received the French Order of Arts and Letters Medal, and whereas Ray Bradbury was presented a star on the Hollywood Walk of Fame, and whereas Ray Bradbury has received countless other awards and accolades because of his expansive body of work in the fields of literature, television, and film. And whereas Ray Bradbury helped design the spaceship Earth Attraction at Walt Disney World's Epcot Center, and whereas Ray Bradbury worked as a consultant for NASA, and whereas Ray Bradbury has an asteroid named in his honor, 9766 Bradbury, and whereas Ray Bradbury is honored by a crater on the moon called Dandelion Crater. And whereas Ray Bradbury is even memorialized on the planet Mars where the Mars Curiosity Landing Site is named Bradbury Landing. Whereas Waukegan plays a pivotal role in many of his literary works as the fictional community known as Greentown, Illinois. And whereas Waukegan is home to unique destinations and artistic endeavors named in tribute to Ray Bradbury, including the Dandelion Gallery, Greentown Tavern, Nightshade and Dark's Pandemonium Brewery, Greentown on the Rocks, as well as the Ray Bradbury Experience Museum. And whereas Ray Bradbury has a star in Waukegan's Walk of Stars Park, and whereas Ray Bradbury Park in Waukegan is dedicated in his honor and was designated a national literary landmark in 2019. And whereas the Bradbury Room in the Waukegan Public Library is a tribute to him and to his love of books, and whereas Waukegan Park District's annual Dandelion Wine Fine Arts Festival and the Waukegan Public Library's annual Ray Bradbury Storytelling Festivals are tributes to Ray Bradbury, using vital impact on our community and to his long-lasting legacy. And whereas fantastical traveler, a twelve-foot tall statue of Ray Bradbury astride a rocket ship was unveiled at the Waukegan Public Library on his birthday in 2019. And whereas it was in our community and on the shores of Lake Michigan in 1932, that carnival entertainer, Mr. Electrico, inspired Ray Bradbury to live forever. And whereas Ray Bradbury seems to have figured out exactly how to do so, and now, therefore, be resolved that Mayor Cunningham and the members of the Waukegan City Council do hereby forever proclaim August 22nd as Ray Bradbury Day in Waukegan, Illinois. Be it further resolved that the city of Waukegan and community partners will dedicate a walkable corridor of Washington Street from his boyhood home at 11 South St. James Street to the Carnegie Library at 1 North Sheridan that will be forever known as Bradbury's Greentown Walkway, to recognize his well-traveled path, as well as to serve as a lasting legacy to this pioneer of our modern era and beyond in celebration of his one-hundredth birthday, dated the third day of August, 2020.
There's a motion, a second on the floor, and any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Hi.
Alderman Newsom.
Hi.
Alderman Turner. Alderman Turner.
Hi.
Thank you.
Alderman Rivera.
Hi.
Alderman Florian.
Hi.
Alderman Taylor.
Hi.
Alderman Bolton.
Alderman.
Hi.
Alderman Seager.
Hi.
Alderman Mosio.
Hi.
Motion passed, sir.
Motion's passed and carried. Item three. Audience time. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. We do have some letters to be read tonight. David Motley from our PR department will read them, and they are timed for three minutes each.
Read fast.
Good evening. I have an opening statement to read before we get started. The city of Waukegan received the exact same form letter from twenty-six recipients. As we are always looking to condense repetitive comments in the interest of time, here's a list of persons submitting this letter. Giselle Thompson, Mason Ramirez, Amanda Ruano, Jessica Rodriguez, Maria Gaetan Martinez, Maya Burles, Andrea Flores, Veronica Smith, Samantha Salmy, Tamara Sanchez, Frida Hernandez, Leslie Samantha, Gia Yetikel, Olivia Kretlow, Veronica Lopez, Roxana, Mary Ann Chui, David Alvarez, Cece Sanan, Gerardo Gordillo, Eric Scalabrine, Brandon Anaya, Dylan Burdette, Julianne Ballard, Aurora Flores, Adriana Gonzalez. And the letter is as follows. Write your statement to be shared at the city council meeting here. You can also attach it as a video or audio recording. It must be less than three minutes. Here's the drafted language that you can use as inspiration for your statement. I am here to express my disapproval that you approved thirty thousand dollars to restock riot gear for the Waukegan Police Department. Decades of research has shown that riot gear escalates conflict between police and citizens. As your constituent, I'm concerned about overpolicing in our community and how disproportionately negatively impacts black and brown neighbors. This week, you have an opportunity to take a stand. Do not waive the lowest bidder requirement and do not approve the three hundred and seventy thousand dollar interior renovations for the police. We do not need more money going into policing. This is a time when we should be demilitarizing, demilitarizing the police force and real allocating funds from the police budget to essential social services in order to improve equity in the community. I would like you to know you have not represented my best interests with the riot gear, and I hope that you will not waive the lowest bidder requirement and approve three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars in funding for police building renovations, sent from my iPhone. Next. Animal cruelty is a crime. My name is Charlie Burleson, and I am a retired Waukegan Police Sergeant. As most of you probably already know, there was recently a horrific animal cruelty situation at 306 South Elmwood. There were numerous dead animals removed from the property, as well as over fifty cats in critical condition. I'm not a politician. I do not collect donations, and I do not get paid, nor do I belong to any organization. I am simply an advocate for animals. Crimes have been committed, and as of the date, there has been no arrest. The biggest crime of all is that there were animals left inside that home with the offender. Please be aware that this is not the first time that this happened at 306 South Elmwood. For those of you who live in that community, you have rights. It is imperative that you contact your elected and appointed officials. I believe in talking with some of you that you have tried over the years and nothing has been done. Collectively, you, through your persistence, will make a difference. You should not have to live near a flea-infested property where animals are dying and the stench can be smelled for blocks. I am urging you to contact the individuals on this letter and demand actions. Ask them why after a humane investigator, animal control, and police read this home, are there still animals suffering at that location? Ask them why all of those animal carriers are strewn around the yard and home, and also ask them why your code enforcement hasn't been out there and red-tagged this property as unfit for occupancy. Also, remember that you have local ordinances at a basic level that apply, such as three animals per household, section four dash five, cruelty to animals, section four dash three, humane care and treatment of animals, section four dash four. I have left a message for Mayor Cunningham and not have heard back as of yet. I was assured on Wednesday from the police that they were working on it. Let me be very clear about one thing. In any cruelty situation, whether it be human or animal, we never leave any helpless child or animal behind. That in itself is cruel and breaks my heart. Mayor Cunningham, eight four seven five nine nine two five one zero. Police Chief Wayne Wallace, eight four seven three six zero nine thousand. Waukegan Animal Control, eight four seven five nine nine two six nine zero. Code compliance, eight four seven six two five six eight six zero. Alderman Seager, eight four seven six six two seven three one one. Thank you all for taking the time to be the voice for those abused animals and for standing up for your neighborhood in the city of Waukegan. Charlie Burles.
Dear Council, my name is Nikki Zarzana, and I live at nineteen twenty-seven Arthur Drive. I have resided in this home over nineteen years, and my street has never been paved, only pothole patching. I recently paid a three hundred and twelve dollar permit fee and had my driveway repaired. So now I am safe until I reach the street, which is all busted in blacktop patches, loose gravel, and blacktop rocks. If you ride motorcycles, as I do, you will know that gravel is not your friend. It took twelve years to remove a tree on the parkway that was getting into my sewer line, and fifteen years to have our sidewalk repaired. This was by using the city works to report issues, which I understand they are quite busy, and I realize that I am not their only customer. I am hoping to get an emergency fifty-foot by twenty-foot blacktop patch in front of my residence before I hit the twenty-year mark. I diligently pay my property tax each year, which as of this year has toppled eighty thousand dollars. We have no children utilizing the school district, so I feel that a small blacktop patch is the least the city can do to ensure my safety in front of my own home. Please refer to the attached photos. Thank you for your time, respectively, Nikki Zarzana.
Dear Waukegan elected officials, my name is Daira Rodriguez, and I'm a resident in Waukegan while currently attending Northwestern University. I'm here to express my extreme concern and disapproval for the approval of thirty thousand dollars to restock riot gear for the Waukegan Police Department, WPD, in addition to our city's budget for the Waukegan Police Department, WPD, and the expense of critical youth, education, and health services. This fiscal year's budget of thirty-seven million, three hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred for the police is alarming when black and brown people are undeniably brutalized at the expense of funding educational, financial, environmental, and health-based initiatives. It is no mistake that we border the wealthy, predominantly white North Shore, and are kept in a low-income black and brown bubble. It is also no mistake that we are labeled as dangerous, as a dangerous city in comparison to the North Shore when the answer lies within funding community-based programs. I think about how worried our community, largely made up of people of color, is about sending their children to the public school system in Waukegan. I think about how many parents are desperate to sign their students up for Christopher Ray St. Martin.
Carmel Catholic High School, or Loyola Academy. I know that the funds currently allocated towards the WPD could be used to make us proud of our education system. I certainly know the students at private schools are no better than those attending public schools, so why should they receive an education full of cramped classrooms and underpaid teachers? For every student that Waukegan High School sends to Stanford, there are hundreds that were never given a fighting chance. Why do you need Beacon Place or a birdie house? It is evidence of children in the community that needs to be invested in their livelihoods rather than waiting to send them to jail. Crime does not happen in a vacuum. Crime happens when resources are lacking. Let us not forget our underfunded health services. We are a city that has been affected by the coal plant, releasing toxins that makes us much more susceptible to cancer. We are undeniably affected by COVID-19 as a largely working-class community. I personally would feel much safer with better-funded health services than a police force that incites violence. While I believe there are good people currently serving in the force, we must acknowledge that police forces were never made to serve the community, especially when like ours. We cannot reform a system. Edgar Sandoval, 5th Ward. Having recently approved an additional $30,000 of funds to go to purchasing riot gear for police, it is frustrating to think that the city wants to continue expanding Waukegan PD's already giant budget of $45 million annually. The PD's riot gear request claimed that in the wake of active incidents throughout the country is their justification for this expense, regardless of the lack of evidence that there is need for our police to be in riot gear in our city. In fact, our police have a history of abuse allegations in which residents need to be protected from. In October 30, 2015, the Chicago Tribune published a report about the investigation into the Waukegan Police Department. Having conducted an analysis of data from the National Registry of Exonerations, the report found that no city police agency in Illinois, other than Chicago's, shares responsibility for as many wrongful convictions as the Waukegan Police. Records show that Waukegan has been inundated with abuse allegations, and insurers and the city have paid out $26.1 million in police cases from 2006 to April 2015 to 50 people, outspending towns with more police and, in some cases, more violent crime. Craig B. Butterman, a clinical professor of law at the University of Chicago Law School, who has studied policeman misconduct, stated that "I would be afraid to live in Waukegan." Victor Kepler, dean of the College of Justice and Safety at Eastern Kentucky University, had an expert on civil liability for police said, "You can have a bad year or two, but Waukegan is totally out of whack with some of the most aggressive and largest agencies in the country." Despite that dozens of people have sued, Waukegan Police overuses of force the city to a department that largely acts with immunity. Hold on. The city consistently approves funding based on rhetoric of presumed fear meant to justify more power and resources to a department that largely acts with immunity. In 2011, Officer Cory Kelly pulled her taser on Quincy Gilmore after responding to a fight resulting in a lawsuit that brought Gilmore $45,000. Denzen received a payout of $85,000 for abuses committed in 2010. In 2010, Jose Martinez had been tasered twice, ultimately contributing to the cause of death. Martinez's family settled. Dear Seager, please respond as to when, at a previous council meeting, I was searching for guidance and encouragement. When you were asked if you had any words to your constituents on the hecticness of COVID, your response was no. I do not feel supported by you. May we build a relationship after today so our constituents can live a joyful life. Committee Captain 372 Gerardo Gordillo, Waukegan's favorite D-list politician. Colin Byers, 5th Ward. Hindsight is 2020. However, right now, we have the opportunity to see clear socially responsible paths towards solutions for the challenges we are facing. We see our city is in an economic decline with rising taxes and social economic issues. City leadership sees the need to fight for a casino despite massive protest. We see Waukegan is disproportionately affected by ETO emissions and the respiratory COVID-19 pandemic. City leadership sees Medline's donations and disregard mask regulations and social distancing. We are seeing lake levels rising and beach erosion. City leaders see the need to support energy despite coal ash ponds that are soon to be underwater. We see calls for social justice and police defunding and reform happening around the world. The city council sees the power of the police union and provides 30K in riot gear proven to escalate police violence. We have seen the damage police are doing across the nation. $378,000 for police department renovations is up for a vote this evening. I see 378,000 ways to improve social services, community capacity building, and environmental protection for a community that is underserved. What will the city leadership see this time? Hindsight is 2020, and so is the election. R.I.P. Our deepest condolences to the Evans family of Waukegan for the passing of Rochelle Evans yesterday. Next. Mayor, could you please verify if true that a city of Waukegan employee was beat up by six men when he attempted to shut off their water last week? And lastly, animal cruelty is a felony crime. This is an urgent call to all animal lovers to join us together with your pets and a face mask on to protest at Waukegan City Hall this wed, 11:00 a.m., and demand Waukegan Police Chief Wayne Wallace arrest both the owner of 306 South Elmwood and Mayor Sam Cunningham. And second Ward Alderman Patrick Seager with felony aggravated cruelty, aggravated animal cruelty, for their continued failure to protect the residents of Waukegan, their failure to condemn this property where 20 dead cats were found. They have ignored hundreds of complaints for months from Waukegan residents. A property full of feces, flea-infested raccoons, has a horrible stench, and where 20 more malnourished animals continue to live. The owner has failed to provide food and water during this extreme heat, endangering the health and welfare not only of those animals, but also of Waukegan residents. Respectfully, Margaret Karaska. Hello, my name is Diana Burdette, and for my comment today stems from anger. In a time where there are civic unrest due to the militarization of police, a decision to approve a purchase for riot gear is daft. The community has been hit hard by the economic hardship this pandemic has caused, and whether you want to admit it or not, there is civic unrest. But it seems that our leadership is continuing the persistent bad habit of ignoring community voices. Today, you have an opportunity to make a change that will help benefit social services, services that affect the services that the community will utilize once we make it out of this period of insecurity. Think twice, hell, think thrice about the continued approval of funds that are going to the police force. Instead, take this moment of time to use funds towards services for our most vulnerable members. When we lift up our most vulnerable, we uplift all. The community members have paid for lawsuit after lawsuit. It's time for each one of you to dig into your power and fight for your constituents. Do not let yourself be overridden. Make a choice to represent your constituents' voices over the loud, overpowering, incoherent voice that tends to dominate over common sense. Hola, mi nombre es Diana Burdette, y mi comentario de hoy proviene de la ira. En un momento en que hay disturbios cívicos debido a la militarización de la policía, la decisión de aprobar una compra de equipo antidisturbios es una tontería. La comunidad ha sido duramente afectada por las dificultades económicas que esta pandemia ha causado, y si desea admitirlo o no, hay disturbio cívico. Pero parece que nuestro liderazgo continua con el más mal hábito persistente de ignorar las voces de la comunidad. Hoy tiene la oportunidad de hacer un cambio que ayudará a beneficiar los servicios sociales, servicios que la comunidad utilizará una vez que salgamos de este periodo de inseguridad. Piénselo dos veces. Demóños. Piensa tres veces sobre la aprobación continua. And that concludes the public comments submitted for this evening, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. All those letters to the council are on our agenda or docs. Thank you, Mayor.
The mayor is muted.
Mute, sir. Alt-A. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Director Motley. Item four, consent agenda. Motion by Alderman Rivera II by Alderman Mozzio to approve items 4A through 4H. Are there any questions to the motion? Okay. We have Alderman Taylor.
Um. I just had a question on H, so if we could remove that? Or you can answer the question, whatever.
I guess. Let's see what I can answer as a motion. What's the question, ma'am?
Um, why if this event happened yesterday, why is it just coming up for approval now?
What? I'm sorry.
Yeah. The date on it looks like it happened yesterday. Or I'm sorry, on the first. It happened on the first.
It's probably when the, depends on when the application came in. What we do, as you all know, we do a blanket of these raffle permits and that's, it just depends on when it came in, ma'am.
Okay.
It became in that day.
The drawing already happened on the first at 8:30 a.m. So I guess my question is, do we do we like put them so that they're approved before we actually like meet? Like, should this have been approved at the last meeting or?
Just depends on when it came in. We had to find out the date. I do not have the date of the application in front of me, but if the application came in after.
July 1st is when it came in.
Yeah, then it should have been on. Yes.
Alderman Taylor, what event are you referring to?
The raffle, the raffle.
This was, I don't know if you remember, but this was a thing that the state of Illinois put in way back when. People didn't used to have to get approval for raffles. Now we have to do every raffle that Tom, Dick, and Harry want to do. It's a pain in the neck. I mean, people used to just do raffles all the time and everything, but they have to get approved. I think if we look on this, we're always, every other month, we just have a blanket, approve all raffles. I mean,
Yeah.
It's ridiculous in my mind.
And I'm sorry, Alderman Mozzio, but Alderman Taylor, typically, if these are organizations, they come in annual. They can do a raffle, and it serves annually for them, and that could have been it. But I'll check that out and find out, but.
Yeah, because I agree with Alderman Mozzio. I mean, it's kind of defeats the purpose. I understand to some degree why the state did this, but if we're approving it after it already happened, like, what's the point in doing it? You know what I mean? Like, what's the point in giving our approval because it's already happened? I understand the process, but whether that be on the state, the way they do it, I mean, somehow seems like this isn't the most beneficial way of doing it.
We'll check the dates in the future, ma'am, and make sure they're compliant. But typically, these come in and we just put them on the docket. But we'll make sure they are looked at a little bit more thoroughly from a date standpoint when they come in. And if need be, we'll give you guys a call prior to if there's something that comes in between. Okay? Thank you, ma'am. Thanks for bringing it to our attention. All right. Any other questions to the motion? Okay. There's a motion, and the second, I will read them. 4A, motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from Monday, July 20th, 2020. Item B, proclamation, overdose awareness day, August 31, 2020. Motion to approve vendor payments dated August 3, 2020, in a total amount of $2,758,392.50. Item D, motion to approve regular payroll dated July 31, 2020, in a total amount of $1,620,187,033. Item E, motion to approve comp time payout dated July 31, 2020, in a total amount of $146,034. Item F, motion to approve PBLC holiday buyback dated July 31, 2020, in a total amount of $2,730.24. Item G, motion to approve final payout dated July 31, 2020, in a total amount of $49,116.29. And item H, motion to approve all raffle permits. Duly noted about the dates on them. Any other questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Hi.
Alderman Newsom.
Hi.
Alderman Turner.
Hi.
Alderman Rivera.
Hi.
Alderman Florian.
Hi.
Alderman Taylor.
Hi.
Alderman Bolton.
Hi.
Alderman Seager.
Hi.
Alderman Mozzio.
Hi.
Motion passed, sir.
Motion's passed and carried. Item five, reports of communication. They're being done. If, and if they are, they would have been in your dockets already. Item six, community development. Alderman Mozzio.
Uh, yeah, sure. Item A, motion to waive the fee associated with the vacation of Northern Avenue for the Waukegan Port District, which was approved on June 2020. I'm sorry, an ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Mozzio, second by Alderman Seager. Uh, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Hi.
Alderman Newsom.
Hi.
Alderman Turner.
Hi.
Alderman Rivera.
Hi.
Alderman Florian.
Hi.
Alderman Taylor.
Hi.
Alderman Bolton.
Hi.
Alderman Seager.
Hi.
Alderman Mozzio.
Hi.
Motion passed.
Motion's passed and carried. Item eight, motion by Alderman Kirkwood, second by Alderman Turner to authorize the executing agreement with Stucky Construction.
Oh, no.
Skipped one.
Yeah. Come back to seven. Item seven.
Oops, I'm sorry. I apologize. Uh, item seven, Alderman Bolton. I cross off my list. I apologize. Alderman Bolton?
Motion to waive the fee associated with the vacation of Northern Avenue.
No, you have seven, eight.
Number seven.
Seven, eight.
Motion authorizing the property property city officials to settle Public Works Department workers' compensation claim 201808170001 for the total of $90,000. two zero one eight zero eight one seven zero 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 one, for the total of nine, ninety thousand dollars.
And you so move. Uh, motion by Alderman Bolton, uh, second by Alderman Florian. Are there any other questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Hi.
Alderman Newsom.
Hi.
Alderman Turner.
Hi.
Alderman Rivera.
Hi.
Alderman Florian.
Hi.
Alderman Taylor.
Hi.
Alderman Bolton.
Hi.
Alderman Seager.
Hi.
Alderman Mozzio.
Hi.
Motion passed, sir.
Motion passing, carry. Thank you. Uh, item eight, motion Alderman Kirkwood, second by Alderman Turner, to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Stucky Construction for the police station interior renovation for the amount not to exceed three hundred seventy-eight thousand. And further authorize the waiver of the lowest bidder requirement pursuant to section two dash four six one, City of Waukegan Business Program, this project refunded from two, twenty eighteen, your obligation bonds and funds. Any, uh, any other questions to the motion? Alderman Taylor.
Um, I have two questions on this, if we can even vote on this, and here's the issues. One, it was brought back for reconsideration by Alderman Mozzio, who actually was not on the negative side. And it was seconded by Alderman Turner, who was on the negative side. So I'm not sure that it could be brought back by someone who was not opposing it to begin with. Second of all, we, you can only reconsider something twice. And that evening, um, we amended, um, that motion, where we reconsidered MAG construction, um, for the police station interior. So we'd already amended and reconsidered, so that's two reconsiderations, and this would be the third. So I'm questioning if that's, I feel like we're violating our ordinances here, and can we even do a vote on that?
Ma'am, first, you know, we've written this by corporate counsel. I think we probably should have talked to the corporate counsel who we brought us tonight. But I'll give corporate counsel an opportunity to speak on that, and then we can go further with that. Oh, corporate counsel?
Good evening, folks. The, uh, you know, there was, that particular motion was confused and partially, partially because of technology, but partially just simply because there was a motion and then it wasn't seconded, then it was seconded, then the second one was withdrawn. And by the time you were through with it, you couldn't really determine exactly what was done, but there was no final vote on it, on the motion for reconsideration that night. And that's where the, that's where this comes from. So under those circumstances, I don't see a problem with them.
Thank you. Thank you, corporate counsel. Anything else, Alderman Taylor?
Um, no, I'm just looking that on the note that's, it kind of says that it failed, so I would consider that a reconsideration.
Okay, uh, thank you, ma'am. Alderman Rivera?
Yeah, I, I, if I remember correctly, we, we voted on Stucky and that failed. And then it was changed, uh, to MAG, and that also failed.
Right.
Okay, what's your question, Alderman?
Motion never passed. It was never, there was never an affirmative for anybody.
Okay.
What's the question, Alderman?
That was my point, yeah.
Yeah, all right. It's like everything has been answered.
Real quick, Bob, am I right on that? There was never an affirmative either way on anybody.
No, neither of the motions ever, ever, neither of them, they both failed.
Right.
So it can come back for reconsideration by someone who was in favor of it to begin with, then?
Because there was no prevailing side, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Hi.
Alderman Newsom.
Hi.
Alderman Turner.
Hi.
Alderman Rivera.
Nay.
Alderman Florian.
No.
Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Bolton.
Hi.
Alderman Seager.
Hi.
Alderman Mozzio.
Hi.
Put a vote, put a vote as a aye for the mayor.
Mayor, would you?
Mayor Cunningham.
Please.
Yes, mayor.
Mayor Cunningham.
Mayor, the mayor votes aye. Motion's passing, carry. Uh, new business. Motion by, motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Taylor, to approve and ordinance adopting City of Waukegan Life Safety Code. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Hi.
Alderman Newsom.
Hi.
Alderman Turner.
Hi.
Alderman Rivera.
Hi.
Alderman Florian.
Hi.
Alderman Taylor.
Hi.
Alderman Bolton.
Hi.
Alderman Seager.
Hi.
Alderman Mozzio.
Hi.
Motion passed.
All right. Item nine B, uh, that will be pushed to, uh, the next council meeting because it was, it was not been, was not able to be seen by the public, uh, when it was uploaded. Item C, motion, there's, there's a motion by Alderman Seager, second by Alderman Taylor, to approve an ordinance extending declaration of emergency in mayoral orders. Any questions to the motion? Alderman Florian.
So, um, I, I just want to point out that, um, I think we need to do everything we can to get our meetings back to city council. This is the second week in a row we've had technical difficulties and had to redo a big portion of the meeting, and we've asked our employees to come back to city hall. And I just think we should make every effort we can to be there in person and be in front of the public.
Alderman Florian, thank you for that, but I, if you'd have called me and told, and I could explain exactly what we did. We did a trial run, uh, about three weeks back, four weeks back, where we tried to rearrange everything and then had the public come in. Uh, technically, it was just virtually impossible at that time. We're going to continue to try this and to get you guys back here. I want you back. We need you back. But I can tell you this right now, all of you would not be able to sit on the dices. Some of you would have to sit in, sit on the floor. And then we had to, because of audience time, we would have to, uh, allow certain people to come in. So we'll have the correct number of individuals in city council. After looking at all those things, it was just too cumbersome for us to do that. We are trying every ounce of our being to get you back. That is the spirit of our council meeting, but we have to do it in a safe and efficient way. And that's where we are. And as soon as we're able to do that, believe me, we will do that. This is not intended, not intentional for us. As you know, these circumstances require that we meet all the available, um, open meeting guidelines that is out there in the state. As you also know, all of you, we have been sued multiple times by the same individual. Is that what we want to go to? Let's try to get it right the first time. I rather take care, I rather have these somewhat difficulties with tech, with our technology. Once here, get it cleared up, repeat, than have to go in front of a judge to explain why we could not allow this person to speak or that person to speak or enter, enter to council chambers. We're trying every, we're trying every week. Eric, IT, myself, the clerk, a corporate counsel, we speak of these things. Can we do it? We think and we believe this is the best possible way to conduct city business that is going to be efficient and effective. It will keep us from having to go through those Open Meetings Act that we all know that someone will sue us. We cannot have that. We don't need that. Thank you, ma'am, for your, but thank you for bringing it to our attention. Alderman Turner?
Yeah, hey, when you guys are talking about maybe you want to consider moving it to an alternate location with the council meetings. You could easily do them at the Genesee Theater. It'd be plenty of room. Council could sit up on the big stage and the audience could spread out throughout the, uh, the seating area there. Just a thought and idea as you were speaking, so.
Yeah, and, and I'll tell you, and I think, uh, I think David, David did look into that, and I'll give you some information on where that, where that's come from, so we'll know. But we're, we're trying here. Uh, I miss, I miss having all of you appear with, with me, with me anyway. But thank you, Alderman Florian, for bringing it to our attention. I know the public would love to be here, so will, uh, still will you. Um, any other questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Hi.
Alderman Newsom.
Hi.
Alderman Turner.
Hi.
Alderman Rivera.
Hi.
Alderman Florian.
Hi.
Alderman Taylor. Alderman Taylor?
She said aye.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Hi.
Alderman Seager.
Hi.
Alderman Mozzio.
Hi.
Motion passed.
Motion passing, carry. Motion by Alderman Mozzio, second by Alderman Newsom, to approve and ordinance authorize city staff to dispose of any, dispose of any and all personal property located in the Carnegie Library, one North Genesee Street. Questions to the motion? Alderman Turner.
Yeah, I apologize. I did not read the, any attached document. How is that property going to be? First of all, what property is it, what type generally? What kind of property are we talking and how is it going to be disposed of?
Yeah, let's, let David, because he has a much better, uh, inventory memory than I would. He is, he's getting prepared.
Your mask on, David. Glasses on.
Uh, great question. Uh, so there are items in there left over from the Carnegie Preservation Project, which is probably from the late eighties. Uh, there are about fifty COMPEK, I believe, computers there and old CRT monitors, uh, miscellaneous RIPRAP, uh, some of the items from, uh, the Genesee Theater construction project, namely some molds, uh, pieces of the Genesee Theater organ and a replacement organ that will, uh, no longer be destined for that facility. Uh, and some, uh, artwork by, uh, renowned artist Jim Harrington and, uh, some particle board and some wooden sawhorses.
Yeah, it's junk.
Yeah.
A lot of junk.
Some of it, sounds like some of it might not be. What, how are you going to dispose of it? Is there anything of value mentioned in artwork by Jim Harrington?
The, the items that, uh, are either of value to the community, uh, like heirlooms or relics from our past, the Waukegan History Museum will keep them as part of their permanent collection. Uh, they've marked those items and they, uh, will ship them off to their facility. I think they did that. Uh, they intend on doing that, and then, uh, some of that will be returned to the building when the project is, uh, to that period. And then the organ parts from the Genesee Theater, we intend on passing those on to the Chicago Theater organ enthusiasts, and they will use the parts, uh, from the, uh, leftover from the Genesee organ or from the replacement organ to, uh, continue to, uh, populate their six organs that they work on at, uh, theater facilities within the region.
And then the remaining stuff that's going to be disposed of, how is that going to, what's the disposal process?
The electronics will go to the Public Works Electronics Dumpster. Uh, some of the particle board and wooden items, they believe that they could use for some of their, uh, operations out at Public Works. Uh, and that's, that's pretty much it. The, the other stuff will be disposed of, uh, either in electronics capacity or in some kind of, uh, dumpster.
Okay, thanks, David. Appreciate you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I have one question. In terms of those items that are being given to other areas, is there any, um, dollars coming back to the City of Waukegan for those organ parts? Or are we just giving those things away?
Uh, we, we have a, a proposal from Cato, which is the Chicago Area Theater Organ Enthusiast, that they will pay us one dollar to take the stuff out of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Uh, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Hi.
Alderman Newsom.
Hi.
Alderman Turner.
Hi.
Alderman Rivera.
Hi.
Alderman Florian.
Hi.
Alderman Taylor.
Hi.
Alderman Bolton.
Hi.
Alderman Seager.
Hi.
Alderman Mozzio.
Hi.
Motion passed.
Motion's passing, carry. Thank you, Alderman, for, for your, your work in tonight's business. Item ten, ordinance is there being none. Item eleven, closing items, Alderman's time, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, first of all, I want to send my condolences to the Evans families and those other families that have lost, uh, loved ones, as well as those pastors who are having some health challenges. Uh, we want to wish those families well and Godspeed in terms of their health recovery. Also want to thank the Public Works Department for the job they did down at the post office area with the sidewalks and the ramps. They've done an excellent job, uh, in that particular area. Also, I want to continue to let our residents know that we must practice social distancing as well as wearing masks. No matter where we are within the city, we need to do that. I am concerned about, uh, the individuals still, uh, playing basketball on Belvedere and Lewis, uh, through, throughout the week. There's, uh, no mask. There's large crowds, especially on Saturday and Sunday. We need to look at that particular situation, and we were asking people to, once again, uh, be safe and be careful. Uh, so continue to do that. Also, the mayor talked about the census. Uh, it's not beating a dead horse because we're losing funding if people do not, uh, do the census. Also, we need to make sure in regards to yard waste, brush, and also to make sure that large items that we contact, uh, are disposed of advanced and let them know that you're going to be putting those items out so we don't have mattresses and other things out for more than, uh, a couple of days. Also, I'll be putting out information regarding ward meetings and also the, uh, Operation Clean Sweep. Once again, I would hope that all of our, uh, older persons stay safe, uh, practice the social distancing and continue to make Waukegan strong. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you. Alderman Newsom.
Thank you. Um, I would like to offer my condolences to, uh, the Evans family as well. I had the opportunity of being Rochelle's student when she came to the city council me, uh, meeting a couple of years ago, almost two years exactly. Um, she talked about the business that she was starting, and I signed up for her class. And I was her only student at the time, so I got one-on-one, um, attention. She was excellent teacher, uh, patient with me and gave me a wealth of information. And I had planned on going back for a second because if you don't use it, you'll lose it. So, um, I won't get a chance to do that, and I regret that now that I didn't sign up for, uh, for that class earlier. But my condolences to her family, uh, also to the pastors, Pastor Gass and Pastor Francis, keeping them in our prayers as well. Um, I would also like to thank Mr. Hewitt and the Public Works Staff. They're doing a great job with, um, cutting out and patching, uh, parts to the fifth ward over on Pine Street, uh, Butrick and Yeoman. They're doing an excellent job, um, in-house, so I'm thankful for that. Uh, the taxpayers are seeing where some of their dollars are going. Uh, we're not able to, um, exactly patch, resurface the whole street, but we're able to cut out those, uh, really bad spots and re-patch them, so I'm thankful for that. And then also I want to announce the next fifth ward, Operation Clean Sweep. It's going to be August the eighteenth, Tuesday, August eighteenth, from eight to three PM. And we're going to do it on the western part of the ward, which is, um, the corner of Greenwood and Delaware. I'll have some flyers, um, made up pretty soon and also have it on the city website and also my Facebook page. If you have any questions regarding, uh, that, please feel free to give me a call. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Turner.
Thank you. So in the sixth ward, we continue to make great progress. So in the sixth ward, we continue to make great progress in neighborhood cleanliness, but we still face the challenges. Every day I'm out there, I'm picking up trash. People are just literally dumping it out, out in the middle of the street, in the intersections, clothing, bags of trash. I don't know why they do that or, but just ask my neighbors out there in the sixth ward if you see some trash laying in the street or in the parkway, pick it up and dispose of it. We can all play a part in maintaining a clean, clean environment. And to that end, on August 5th, that's two days from now, we're going to have a dumpster dropped at 741 Glen Florer between nine and three. That's in front of the newly revitalized Dollar General store. So that store is back in business. And we're going to put a dumpster out there in front of it. It's kind of ironic, right? But we're going to put the dumpster out in front of the Dollar General. There will also be city trucks there as well. So I want to make this as clear as I can. There's material that can go in the dumpster, which goes out to a landfill. Things that are going to deteriorate over time, right? But there are materials that cannot go in a dumpster, like your TVs and your rubber tires and such. There will be a city truck there to take those types of materials and they will be recycled in accordance with the city's and Public Works recycling efforts, right? So in, if you're in doubt, bring it, okay? And we'll arrange to take it off your hands. That's pretty much all I have for now and we'll, we'll have some exciting information in our next meeting, so stand by for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Rivera.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First of all, as everyone has indicated, condolences to the Evans and the McBride family. Also, my best wishes to Pastor Gass. And I want to thank the, the mayor for making that, that decision to close the beach to non-residents. That was a great move. Hopefully, we can keep it up and have our residents and our citizens enjoy the lakefront in a comfortable environment where they don't have to worry about being so clustered in. And, and to that, also just to remind everyone to, please stay alert. Make sure you do wear your, your face mask. It is, it is very important to stay safe when you go out. Go out when it is necessary. And, and again, please stay safe, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I also would like to offer my thoughts and condolences to the Evans family and all of those who knew and loved Rochelle Evans. When I came to City Council meetings for a year before I was elected, her and I often sat together. I didn't know who she was at first, but we soon discovered I went through school with her brother Bobby. She shared with me her story of coming home to care for her parents in their later years. She was beautiful inside and out. May she rest in peace. I want to address the letters from Audience Time regarding the riot gear purchases. I messaged the police chief to clarify this. The asset forfeiture funds can only be spent on gear and vehicles. The gear they purchased was protect, protective. It was for helmets and shields. No offensive tools such as batons or other riot control agents. So just to clarify, that money spent was out of asset forfeiture funds, not out of the general budget. We, as Aldermen, receive a daily email from the Police Department concerning significant incidents that have occurred in the last 24 hours. Burglary, arson, sexual assault, shots, sexual assault, shots fired, death investigations, aggravated discharge of a gun, shootings and car accidents are some of the recent incidents we've had sent to us. While it's disheartening to read this list and frankly to read the daily emails, please understand that Waukegan isn't in the top 10 most dangerous cities in Illinois. I believe we have a reputation we don't deserve. I said that when I ran for office and I still believe it today. That being said, we obviously have issues we need to address. I believe, as Alderman Robin Simmons of Evanson said recently, that violence and crime are symptoms of poverty and poverty is mostly a condition of historical institutional racism which permeates our policies and our culture. I believe in spite of the financial challenge we are facing due to COVID-19, we must appropriate the tax proceeds, proceeds from the marijuana sales towards reparations for our community. I proposed this to the mayor months ago. We need to focus on jobs, education and housing in our Black community. This issue has been ignored at a city level, a county level and a state level in Waukegan for too long. Lifting up the long oppressed in our community will benefit all of us. I also want to mention that Alderman Moiseo mentioned kind of in passing a couple meetings ago about making the local elections nonpartisan. And I'd like to voice my encouragement for something like that. I think that's something that we need to do. Most of the things we vote on have nothing to do with whether we're Republican, Democrat and Independent. And I think it would be a great asset for our community if everything was just nonpartisan and there wasn't outside money influences on our, our local elections. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor.
I want to start by also expressing my condolences to the McBride and Evans family. I'd like to say Rochelle was both a beautiful and articulate woman who unfortunately was taken from us way too soon. Also prayers to Pastor Gass and Pastor Francis. I think as a community, we need to make sure that we pray for these men in particular. They, they need us right now. I want to announce that this week is the cleanup in the ninth ward on the east side of the ward. So it's Thursday, August 6th from eight to 11:00 in, in the Power Waukegan parking lot, which some of you will know as the Old Hobo, but the name of it is Power Waukegan. Saturday was the blessing of our new fire truck. For residents who haven't seen it, please take the opportunity to go and see it. It's the only one in the state of Illinois like this and it's incredible. I also would like to say to people, I'm seeing a lot of masks being thrown around in our community, these disposable ones. I'm going to tell you to think of them as dirty diapers you're throwing out. Those masks are contaminated and you're throwing them out into the environment that has germs on them. Please, whatever your, if you have these masks in your car, wait until you find a garbage can to dispose of them. But there are a lot of them flying around in our city and it needs to stop. I also want to say at this point, I agree with Alderman Florian that some of the money, if not all of the money that we take in from marijuana should be used to help our community in the form of reparations, so I, I agree with that. Last, I'd like to recognize Alderman Florian. She has put together and has been working with animal control who, as many of you know, that building is pretty beat up. And she's been working with the fire department and animal control and has approached a couple of us Aldermen to help fix up some of the things that need to be done in that, in animal control in order to help the animals there. So if any of you are interested, please get in touch with one of us. But I think it's a, a great move on her part to get the community involved in this. And it's just to help clean it up and to make it a little bit better for people coming to animal control. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I also like to offer my condolences to the Evans family as well as the McBride family. Rochelle and I talked often. I too was going to take her Spanish class and I just offer my prayers and condolences as well as support. Also, I'd like to offer, let everyone know, I'm definitely also in agreement in praying for Pastor Francis, who I'm personally close with, as well as Pastor Gass. And both are very strong spiritual leaders in our community. And to the first ward, I also want to let you know in September, I believe I SAW will be offering Operation Clean Sweep. And once again, we can't echo it enough. Please complete your census and practice social distancing. And yes, to the other Aldermen, I'd like to get involved in the animal control project as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Seager.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. First of all, I'd also like to wish my condolences to the Evans family and the McBride family and to the pastors, your and my pastors, gentlemen. And also, we have some construction work on sidewalks and curves in the second ward and mostly it's south of 120 and Doug Dale Road. And just a reminder to the public, if you're in that area by the Belvedere Mall, please drive safely, slowly and be careful. Be aware of this. It's a lot of work and all I'm asking is just be careful. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Alderman Moiseo.
Thank you. My condolences, I actually in the same class with Rochelle Evans. We graduated high school together. So she was a dear friend of mine, just a tragic situation. So my condolences to the family. I'd like to thank Alderman Florian for beating me the punch about the forfeiture fund, explaining that. I appreciate that. A lot of those names that I heard at Audience Time were former students. Janet, can you hear me or no? We good?
Oh, you're good. We just lost the mayor. Go ahead.
Okay. And I'd like to, if they want to talk to me about this and deferring funds from the Police Department and this and that. City, the City Council, the city of Waukegan does not have a social work department. We don't have that. We don't have a health department. That's why this whole COVID-19 thing's been run by the Health Department. We don't have one.
County Health Department.
Yeah, we don't, the city of Waukegan doesn't have a health, we don't, we don't have any social workers on our staff. We don't have that. So this whole, this whole movement of defund the police for more social systems and social workers and things of that sort, I'm paraphrasing, you know, greatly. We couldn't defer funds to that anyway. And in my opinion, we need more police. As Alderman Florian said, if you, the reports we get, you'd understand, we need more than what we got. It's not, we don't need less, we need more. Now, do we maybe need a little bit of different training by some officers? Absolutely, we all know that. But I've been around 20 years and we need more, probably now, more than ever. If you want more education and you want more social services, you need to go to the Lake County Board, the Waukegan District 60, and you need to talk to them because they have those services. The city of Waukegan does not have those services. So you need to go to a different governing body and bark up their tree and ask them what we can do. Yeah, do we need to fix a lot of things in this country? Yes. But the city of Waukegan, we, we're trying, and as far as money goes, we're trying to stay in our lane. We pay for police, we pay for firemen, we pay for Public Works and we pay for City Hall staff. That's about it. That's what our, that's what our purview is right there. And other stuff that people are asking for, we don't, we, we have, we would have no way of doing it anyway. So anybody that would like to talk further about that, they can contact me. They know how to get ahold of me. But I could share, share a lot of information with these people about why we need more police to help curb some of the problems that we have. And exactly, it comes down to education and housing and jobs and economics and all of that stuff. But that's not just a city issue. That's a societal issue for every government body to try to tackle and take on. If you, but like I said, we don't have a department for that. We couldn't divert funds if we wanted to. Where would we divert them to? We don't have social workers on, on hand. That's not our purview. So we need to understand that. And again, if everybody wants to talk more about that, again, like I've always said, I'm never going to stifle Audience Time, ever. But it's not the best platform to talk to your electorate representative. Everybody that I know on this City Council and any City Council I've sat on is more than responsive to talk to people when they want to, when they want to talk. Then it's give and take. It's not you talk and then you got to wait for me for two hours later and then I get to respond. That's not effective at all. So if you want, if you want more on that, give me a call and we'll talk to anybody that wants to talk about it. With that, motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion by, motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Turner to adjourn. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
You have a corn.
Motion's passed and carried. Alderman, thank you again for your service to our community. You guys take care. Try to stay healthy, stay home when necessary. God bless. Waukegan strong out. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
God bless everyone.
Good night.